Did you get the ones carried for?
I did.
All right, please rise for a pledge of allegiance. Hi, I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the Constitution of the Constitution of this country, and to the Constitution of this world. Okay, good evening, everybody. Please call the roll.
Mayor Delacuilla.
Here.
Director of Law, Pignatello.
Here.
Councilman-at-large Bicker.
Here.
Councilman-at-large Kranek.
Here.
Councilman-at-large Trevis.
Here.
Board one, Councilman Biassiata.
Here.
Board two, Councilman Frondor.
Here.
Board three, Councilman Kukrow.
Here.
Board four, Councilman Petro.
Here.
Director of Public Service and Properties and Properties.
Here.
Building Commissioner Morrow.
Okay, we're going to begin with the reading and disposal of the journal, starting with the minutes of the regular council meeting held January 23, 2017.
Yes, Mr. President.
Councilman Frondor.
Having read the council minutes of the council meeting dated January 23, 2017, I find no errors or omissions, therefore I move that they be approved as printed.
I second.
Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biassiata.
Yes.
Frondor.
Yes.
Kranek.
Yes.
Kukrow.
Yes.
Petro.
Yes.
Trevis.
Yes.
Bicker.
Yes.
Okay, the minutes for the regular council meeting held January 23, 2017 have been approved. We'll now move on to the minutes of the special council meeting held January 28, 2017.
Yes, Mr. President.
Councilman Frondor.
Again, having read the minutes of the special council meeting dated January 28, 2017, I find no errors or omissions, and therefore I move that they be approved as printed.
I'll second that. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biassiata.
Yes.
Frondor.
Yes.
Kranek.
Yes.
Kukrow.
Yes.
Petro.
Yes.
Trevis.
Yes.
Bicker.
Yes.
Meeting minutes for the special council meeting held January 28, 2017 have been approved. Moving on to the consent agenda dated February 27, 2017.
Yes, Mr. President.
Councilman Frondor.
If there is no division of the question, I move that we accept the consent agenda dated February 27, 2017.
I second.
Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biassiata.
Yes.
Frondor.
Yes.
Kranek.
Yes.
Kukrow.
Yes.
Petro.
Yes.
Trevis.
Yes.
Bicker.
Yes.
Consent agenda dated February 27, 2017 has been accepted. Are there any resolutions of commendation?
We have none.
Reports of committees, the Planning, Zoning, and Economic Development Committee last met on February 21st. Those meeting minutes are filed with the clerk, and our next meeting will be on March 20th. Public Works Committee, Councilman Petro.
Mr. Chairman, I believe our next meeting is March 6.
Okay. Community Services Committee, Councilman Bicker.
We last met on the 6th of February. We're going to meet March 6.
Thank you. Police and Safety, Councilman Kranek.
Next meeting of the Police and Safety Committee will be March 20th, and maybe minutes from the last meeting are on file with the Secretary.
Thank you. Parks and Recreation, Councilman Kukrow.
Our last meeting was on February 21st. Our next meeting will be on March 6, and the minutes will be forthcoming.
Thank you, Councilman. Are there any appointments and confirmations?
Not this evening.
Thank you. Any communications, petitions, and claims?
Just one note for the record. The advertisement for the public hearing in reference to amended ordinance number 27, 2017, has been made with the Plain Dealer. The public hearing will be held this Thursday, March 2nd, at 6:30 PM here in Council Chambers.
Thank you. Council will now be open to the audience on legislation only. If you have any comments regarding any item on our agenda, please approach the podium and state your name and address. Anybody in the first row? Second row? Third?
Ken Berdinski, 1711 Cherry Lane, on ordinance 24, 24, 2017, the full-time mayor. I was just wondering why you're pushing it, rushing it through so fast. I know you're not rushing. It's only to go to vote, but why are we rushing if it doesn't go into effect until 2019 or whatever?
There's a deadline to get it on the ballot for this May. That deadline is quickly approaching, and it's on for third reading. There's been many public meetings regarding this, and it's just to meet the deadline.
Okay, why do we want to get it on the ballot in this May?
Because it... Why not?
To get it passed? I mean, a lot of times, people put things on the ballot to get it passed because there's a lower voter turnout.
This council has identified a problem with our city, and when we campaigned for office, we said that when we identify a problem, we will do everything we can to attempt to fix it. We're not making this full-time. The residents would.
I understand.
Or may not.
But I mean, it doesn't take an effect until, maybe, two years from now.
Longer than that.
Yeah. There's really no real reason.
There's a problem, and we're trying to fix it.
But it won't be fixed for two years, two years, two and a half years anyway.
That's the soonest it can be fixed. We're simply giving the residents a choice if they want to change it or not. That's it.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. Anybody further? Okay, ordinances and resolutions. Ordinance number 16, 2017.
Mr. President.
Councilman Kukrow.
I move that we amend ordinance number 16, 2017 by adding an emergency.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biassiata.
Yes.
Frondor.
Yes.
Kranek.
Yes.
Kukrow.
Yes.
Petro.
Yes.
Trevis.
Yes.
Bicker.
Yes.
Ordinance number 16, 2017 has been amended to add the emergency clause. Is there a further motion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Kukrow.
I move that we suspend the rules under the Charter and read amended ordinance number 16, 2017 by title only for its final reading and declaring emergency.
Second, Mr. Chairman. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biassiata.
Yes.
Frondor.
Yes.
Kranek.
Yes.
Kukrow.
Yes.
Petro.
Yes.
Trevis.
Yes.
Bicker.
Yes.
Amended ordinance number 16, 2017, introduced by Councilman Trevis, Frondor, Bicker, Kranek,
Biassiata, Kukrow, and Petro, and ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor to enter into an agreement on behalf of the city of Seven Hills, Ohio, with Larson Lumber of Brexville, Ohio, for the purpose of purchasing a 20-by-28-by-8-foot open four-side pavilion package with appurtenances to be constructed at Calvin Park and appropriating the sum not to exceed $10,786.34 for said purchase and declaring an emergency.
Amended ordinance number 16, 2017 has been read for its second and final reading. Is there a further motion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Kukrow.
I move that we pass amended ordinance number 16, 2017.
Second motion, Mr. Chairman.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President.
Councilman Kukrow.
The reason that we're adding the emergency for people who weren't in the caucus meeting is with the wonderful weather we've been having this spring, we have a real opportunity to move up some of these projects. This one's especially important because we are experiencing $8,000 to $10,000 worth of free labor if we can commit, if we can get these Parma school students to actually get in and do this, and frankly, we just want to give us more time to make sure that we can get that. So that's why we added the emergency to this.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Biassiata.
Yes.
Frondor.
Yes.
Kranek.
Yes.
Kukrow.
Yes.
Petro.
Yes.
Trevis.
Yes.
Bicker.
Yes.
Amended ordinance number 16, 2017 has passed. Moving on to ordinance number 17, 2017.
Mr. President.
Councilman Kranek.
I move that we suspend the rules under the Charter and read amended ordinance number 17, 2017 by title only for its second and final reading.
I'll second that.
Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biassiata.
Yes.
Frondor.
Yes.
Kranek.
Yes.
Kukrow.
Yes.
Petro.
Yes.
Trevis.
Yes.
Bicker.
Yes.
Amended ordinance number 17, 2017, introduced by Councilman Trevis, Frondor, Bicker, Kranek, Biassiata, Kukrow, and Petro, and ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor to enter into an agreement on behalf of the city of Seven Hills, Ohio, with Home Field Turf and Athletic Incorporated for labor and installation services at Valleywood Baseball Field to improve the grade and playing surface and appropriating the sum not to exceed $5,200 for said service and declaring an emergency.
Amended ordinance number 17, 2017 has been read for its second and final reading. Is there a motion?
Yes, Mr. President.
Councilman Kranek.
I move that we would pass amended ordinance number 17, 2017.
I'll second that.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President.
Councilman Kukrow.
Yeah, again, we're adding the emergency on this for the same exact reason, and 18, although we're afraid making comment on 18, but basically, we may be able to move this schedule up an entire month if we do this now because of the weather, and frankly, that will not go into the practice times for any of the Federation or anything, and we, it's just the timing. So that's really all this is about. Everyone on council agrees that we want to do this. We're just doing it just for timing. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Biassiata.
Yes.
Frondor.
Yes.
Kranek.
Yes.
Kukrow.
Yes.
Petro.
Yes.
Trevis.
Yes.
Bicker.
Yes.
Amended ordinance number 17, 2017 has passed. Moving on to ordinance number 18, 2017.
Yes, Mr. President.
Councilman Frondor.
I move that we suspend the rules under the Charter and amend ordinance number 18, 2017 by adding emergency.
I second.
Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biassiata.
Yes.
Frondor.
Yes.
Kranek.
Yes.
Kukrow.
Yes.
Petro.
Yes.
Trevis.
Yes.
Bicker.
Yes.
Amended ordinance number 18, 2017, introduced by Councilman Trevis, Frondor, Bicker, Kranek, Biassiata, Kukrow, and Petro, and ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor to enter into an agreement on behalf of the city of Seven Hills, Ohio, with Natural Sand Company Incorporated, a division of Dur Edge Products Incorporated, for the purpose of furnishing 150 bulk tons Dur Edge Classic Infield Mix and six bulk tons of ProSlide Classic Red Top Dressing for the Valleywood Fields and appropriating the sum not to exceed $10,428 for said purchase and declaring an emergency.
Amended ordinance number 18, 2017 has been read for its second and final reading. Is there a motion?
Yes, Mr. President.
Councilman Frondor.
I move that we pass ordinance number, amended ordinance number 18, 2017.
I second.
Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biassiata.
Yes.
Frondor.
Yes.
Kranek.
Yes.
Kukrow.
Yes.
Petro.
Yes.
Trevis.
Yes.
Bicker.
Yes.
Amended ordinance number 18, 2017 has passed.
Ordinance number 20, 2017, introduced by Mayor Delacuilla and Councilman Trevis, Frondor, Bicker, Kranek, Biassiata, Kukrow, and Petro, and ordinance to authorize the mayor to enter into an agreement with Miller &amp; Company Portable Toilet Service Incorporated of Canton, Ohio, to provide portable toilet service during the city's Seven Hills, 2017 home days, July 28th and 29th, 2017, and authorizing an amount not to exceed $435 for said service.
Ordinance number 20, 2017 has been read for its second reading. We'll now have the second reading of ordinance number 21, 2017.
Ordinance number 21, 2017, introduced by Councilman Trevis, Frondor, Bicker, Kranek, Biassiata, Kukrow, and Petro, and ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Miller &amp; Company Portable Toilet Service Incorporated of Canton, Ohio, to provide portable toilet service for some of few commons, North Park, John Glenn Park, Calvin Park, and the city's Seven Hills Farmers Market, and authorizing an amount not to exceed $2,661.25 for said service.
Ordinance number 21, 2017 has been read for its second reading. We'll now have the second reading of ordinance number 22, 2017.
Ordinance number 22, 2017, introduced by Mayor Delacuilla and Councilman Trevis, Frondor, Bicker, Kranek, Biassiata, Kukrow, and Petro, and ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor to enter into an agreement on behalf of the city of Seven Hills, Ohio, with Prime Pay of West Chester, Pennsylvania, for professional services for the 1095, 1094 mandated reporting for year 2017, as a result of the Affordable Care Act and authorizing an amount not to exceed $4,500 for said service.
Ordinance number 22, 2017 has been read for its second reading. We'll now have the second reading of ordinance number 23, 2017.
Ordinance number 23, 2017, introduced by Councilman Trevis, Frondor, Bicker, Kranek, Biassiata, Kukrow, and Petro, and ordinance two-man subsections 911.06, 8, and 9, as contained in section 911.06, conditions precedent to final approval of Record Map issuance of building permits, as contained in chapter 911, acceptance and dedication of subdivisions generally of Title III, Plats and Plating, of Part IX, Planning and Zoning Code of the Codified Ordnances of the City of Seven Hills, Ohio.
Ordinance number 23, 2017 has been read for its second reading. Moving on to ordinance number 24, 2017.
Mr. President.
Councilman Kukrow.
I move that we suspend the rules under the Charter and read ordinance number 24, 2017 by title only for its first and final reading.
I second.
Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biassiata.
Yes.
Frondor.
Yes.
Kranek.
Yes.
Kukrow.
Yes.
Petro.
Yes.
Trevis.
Yes.
Bicker.
Yes.
Ordinance number 24, 2017, introduced by Mayor Delacuilla and Councilman Trevis, Frondor, Bicker, Kranek, Biassiata, Kukrow, and Petro, and this is third reading, and ordinance providing for the submission to the electors of the city of Seven Hills, Ohio, a certain charter amendment pursuant to Article 10 of the Charter of the city of Seven Hills, Ohio, for the purpose of amending Article IV of the mayor's Section 1 term proposing that the office of mayor's safety director be a full-time position.
Ordinance number 24, 2017 has been read for its third reading. Is there a motion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Kukrow.
I move that we pass ordinance number 24, 2017.
I second.
Is there any discussion? I have a couple of comments on this ordinance this evening. In 2015, the members of the Contract for Seven Hills campaigned on many different things. We promised our residents that we would make significant changes, and frankly, we have. I won't go through that list, but nearly every promise that we made during that campaign was already accomplished in just about a year, and it's working. We have a different city today compared to a year ago, and I don't regret anything that we've done. I'm very proud of what this council has achieved. It's our job to identify problems and try to fix them. This council, the mayor, and the law director agree unanimously that having a part-time mayor is a problem. This charter amendment is giving our residents a choice on whether or not they want to help move Seven Hills forward or continue handcuffing the progress of our city. It's not up to council. It's up to our residents. Now, for many years, probably even decades, as Councilman Petro mentioned previously, there has been talk and some efforts made to change one of the biggest problems in our charter that prevents progress, and that is making our mayor's position full-time and compensated accordingly. Back when our charter was adopted in 1966, a part-time mayor very well may have been appropriate. Today, it is not. There's absolutely no doubt that we are not a part-time city, and to say that the position of mayor is ceremonial is just comical. Now, I want to take a few minutes to share just some of the duties and responsibilities of our mayor. The mayor of Seven Hills oversees every department in our city, the police, the fire, service department, engineering, recreation center, mayor's court, finance, building, and the mayor's office, and community service department. He oversees the boards and commissions, the planning commission, the zoning board of appeals, civil service commission, income tax review committee, charter review committee, financial advisory board, record retention, tree commission, disaster services. These are all ordinances, and some of these are in our charter. The mayor of our city has to coordinate with the regional income tax agency, the Parma City School District, Parma Hospital Board of Directors, Northeast Ohio Regional Sewer District, Environmental Protection Agency, Cox Communications, Waste Management, the Board of Elections, Cleveland Division of Water, NOPEC, various county, state, and federal agencies, and I'm sure I'm missing some. Some of the day-to-day responsibilities of our mayor, and this is probably a short list. He's a chief executive officer of our city. He enforces all laws and ordinances. He executes all contracts. He signs all purchase orders and checks, executes all indebtedness. He's a ceremonial head of our city. He is the economic development head of our city. He does our human resources. He officiates at weddings. He meets with residents, handles dozens of complaints a week, works with grants. He has legislative functions. The mayor has every power as a councilman as far as introducing legislation. He has judicial responsibilities with mayor's court. He oversees a $20 million budget, including all funds, separate the general fund. He oversees nearly 200 employees. This list I just read off doesn't even cover it all. This is a partial list, and mayor, I'm sure you can name probably a couple dozen more things that you do that I didn't include in this. To say that the city of Seven Hills is a part-time city just isn't accurate anymore. I'm going to leave my comments at that, but again, the mayor of Seven Hills, regardless of who or where she is, is not a ceremonial position. This is a very big job. Is there any further conversation?
Mr. President.
Councilman Bicker.
I'd like to present some mayoral statistics pertinent to status and compensation of surrounding cities that are otherwise similar to Seven Hills. In Berea, population 18,000. Full-time mayor, benefits 102,000 salary. Brexville, 13,000 full-time, benefits 116,000. Broadview Heights, 19,000 full-time, medical benefits 105,000. Brooklyn, 10,000 full-time, medical benefits 92,000. Brook Park, 18,000 residents, full-time, medical benefits 110,905. Independence, part-time, 7,100. They get medical benefits and $75,000. Middleburg, 15,000 population, full-time status, medical benefits $160,000. North Royalton, 30,000 full-time, medical benefits 96,146. Seven Hills, 11,800. Part-time, no medical benefits, $14,000.
Thank you, Councilman Bicker. Is there any further discussion?
Yes, Mr. President.
Councilman Biassiata.
When I was campaigning, I promised Lord One that I'd be their voice representative on council. I intend to keep that promise tonight. To date, I received more feedback on this issue than any other to date. To varying degrees, the feedback has been 100% against this issue at this time. At a high level, they seem to be concerned with the process. I'll name a few of the reasons my residents have shared with me in regards to this proposal. They prefer such a large change in our city to be on the November ballot as opposed to the May ballot. They also felt, prior to tonight, that we, council as a whole, myself included, have not demonstrated a quantifiable need to change the current position to full-time. Next, they would prefer that we, the money we spend in other areas of the city operation. And last but not least, they felt this is a matter that would be best brought before Charter Review Commission comprised of residents. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Yes, Mr. President.
Councilman Kukrow.
Councilman Bicker just gave us some of those raw numbers, which were pretty amazing. It does show that we're behind the times. Thanks for doing research on that. I had done my own numbers on that, but way more extensive than I was. But it does convince me even more that, what I believe, that we do need to put this to the residents to vote. So instead of talking about the numbers, I'm going to talk about something a little bit different. The question for residents for a full-time mayor in 2019, almost three years away, is really a question for the vision, the future of our city, and it's simple to me. You have to ask yourself, what's your vision of Seven Hills in a few years? Then decide if you believe that vision you have for the city can be accomplished if we keep things the way they've been for over 50 years. Here's my vision of Seven Hills, and here's why I believe we need a full-time chief operating officer running the city. If you agree with me, you'll vote yes and make our next mayor in 2019 full-time. If you don't, you'll vote no. But as it should be, it's up to you to use your democratic power to decide through your vote. Remember, I'm not here to convince you. I'm here to explain my reasoning. Then you're all going to decide. So Seven Hills has often been referred to as a sleepy bedroom community, and while I like that description, and it's one of the major reasons I moved my family here over 20 years ago and raised my kids here, I also don't like it when people say that about us, and here's why. A sleepy bedroom community is a wonderful, romantic, old-fashioned description, but the designation limits us in a way where we are viewed by everyone around us, from new families who want to live here to new businesses that might want to come here and give us big tax revenue. My point is, you can be both a sleepy bedroom community and a modern, wealthy city with great amenities and services. Look at practically every single city around us, and you can see they've done it. There's no reason we can't do it either, but we have to make some changes to get there. feels like a sleepy bedroom community still in parts, but also a city that not only has one of the best locations in the area, but also a city that has a brand-new, beautiful Rockside Road development, full of new homes, new businesses, and restaurants. I see a city with better parks and amenities, with new families that appreciate that. I see new roads and sewers. I see scores of new residents moving here saying, "Seven Hills is really an amazing place to live." Look at how they keep it up. Look at how they keep it fresh. Look at how they give us what we want as residents. I see neighboring communities very jealous of what we have and what we're doing, and I can assure you, they're going to be very jealous when Rockside is done. I see residents getting the city services they always wanted and expecting them to be excited to see what's coming next. But to get to that point, to keep that vision alive, I believe that our next mayor and future mayors beyond that need to be full-time. Here's why. Now, you've already heard that our current mayor, according to our charter, only makes, was $14,000 a year. This is a huge problem in Seven Hills. I get why this was put in place a long time ago, over 50 years ago. The mayor position back then was really largely ceremonial in nature. Seven Hills was a small community, and we still are, and the need just wasn't there for a CEO, a chief operating officer. It just wasn't a need for it in the past. But times have changed, and the city is now suffering from not having a full-time CEO in charge. So I want you to imagine this. You have a business that has hundreds of employees with multiple departments and an annual budget of close to $10 million. Now imagine you handed the keys to that business to a part-timer, someone who's not there every day, all day, someone who treats the position as ceremonial in nature, instead of running it as the big boss, runs it as a different way, where they let the directors handle everything without any real oversight or accountability, or as much as you can do when you're part-time. This isn't a dig against what our current mayor, this is simply facts. At part-time, you can't do what you need to do. So consider this scenario. You have our current part-time mayor situation, and you have other full-time mayors in cities around us. The full-time CEO-mayors around us wake up every morning, and they go to their full-time job of running the city. They might meet their directors every single morning and go over what needs to happen that day. They might meet with a potential business and negotiate deals and bring them to the city. They might have lunch with a person from an agency that has a grant that we could apply for. Then they might stop in its service department to see if everything's running smoothly. Then they might have scheduled meetings with residents, and more, all in one day. Now, do that every day, all year. Where is your city then with that kind of leadership and commitment? All you have to do is look around at the cities around us, and you'll see what I'm talking about. The impact of having that person there all the time, committed, pays off. There's absolutely no question. What we have in Seven Hills now doesn't work. You can't lead effectively part-time. You just can't. Having been on council now for just over a year, I see how this is hurting our city, hence my reasoning for bringing this up for residential vote. So what do I want in a full-time mayor? And is your vision the same as mine? You should ask yourself. I want a gung-ho, deal-making, hard-line CEO who's going to come in every day and demand his or her employees are the best and do the best work possible. And if they're not, taking action to remove them and replace them with someone who will. In my opinion, the only way you're going to get that type of person to run for mayor is if it's a full-time position. Pay it accordingly. So to me, this is about your vision for what you want Seven Hills to be. Do you want it to be like Independence? Do you want us to be like Braxville? Do you want us to be like Broadview Heights? I do. And that's why this vote is so important. When I got elected, I did so with the promise I would work as hard as I could to change the city, but only as far as the residents wish to change it. So far, by evidence of your confidence in voting yes on our income tax issue and the other issues this council has put in front of you, the majority of you agree and see the same bright future for the city that I do. So vote accordingly, but those are my reasons. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Kukral. Is there any further conversation?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Pietro.
All I have to say is, not speaking for rich, but we've been around quite a while since the 80s, and this topic has been brought up over the years. Every argument, every reason not to have a full-time mayor, to have a full-time mayor has been discussed. In my opinion, the years that I've been here, and I started in 1973, is that the time has changed, that it's needed. Like, I'll agree with Jimmy. There are times you didn't need it, but we got a $150 million project, we have a ton of employees, we have a rec center, as was discussed, and I think that the full-time mayor should be there to administer and watch over, and that's all I have to say, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilman Pietro. Is there any further discussion?
Mr. President, yes.
Mayor Delacqua.
Very briefly. Thank you. I don't know whether to be flattered or insulted, actually. I would first say this. This is far more than a 40-hour-per-week position. That's been the typically accepted dividing point between full-time and part-time. I can tell you that I devote far more time to this position than I do any other responsibility that I have in my life currently. We operate this city without an HR director. We operate this city without an economic development director. We've gone now over a year without a finance director. We're operating the rec center with one full-time employee. Our building commissioner is currently part-time. So to be told that people aren't riding herd on these employees is really quite insulting. However, I do believe that this position requires someone who's mandated to be here for a definitive period of time. I can tell you, though, that it will not change what I'm doing, and it certainly will not add any more responsibilities to whoever would fill this position. There are responsibilities that must be met. I can tell you that I don't look at my paycheck when I decide whether I'm going to fulfill those responsibilities, nor do I look at the charter to determine whether or not I put in enough time. I simply roll up my sleeves and I do it. So again, being damned with faint praise here is a little bit discomforting, but I do get it. My one concern in putting this on the ballot, and it is my intention if council passes it to approve it, is that I had wished that council would have taken a look at the possibility of proposing a city manager form of government as well. As I had expressed previously, I believe that many of the positions that we have gone without here for many years, including economic development, HR, et cetera, could be folded in to the city manager's position, thereby saving a couple of additional salaries. But, you know, this is council's will, and I certainly will not stand in the way of placing this on the ballot. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Delacqua. And, Mayor, I don't want you to think that we are saying that you're not putting the time in. We certainly recognize that you are. On occasion, probably more often than not, we may not agree on a certain thing or a way to do something, but it certainly isn't saying that you're not working hard at this. We all recognize that, and I want you to know that. Now, I do want to address the city manager thing real quickly. We have, I think, 58 or 59 communities in Caga County. Two communities have city managers, Cleveland Heights and Bedford. The city manager in Cleveland Heights makes $140,000 a year, not including benefits, and there are some other perks as well. The city manager in Bedford makes $96,000 or $97,000 a year, plus benefits, a couple other perks. I spend a lot of time thinking about city manager, and the biggest reason, aside from the high dollar amount, that I don't support a city manager system, is because it takes residents' vote away on who the leader of your city is. City managers in these two communities, and every community across the state of Ohio and possibly in other states as well, are hired and fired by city council. So let's say we had a city manager today, and the city council wanted XYZ done, and the city manager said, "No, I'm not doing it." We fire him. There's no checks and balances there. It gives complete control of the administrative functions and the legislative functions to one body. There's no checks and balances. I think that is an absurd way to run our government. I think it's an absurd way to run anybody's government, and that's at least my reasonings for not supporting a city manager system. Is there any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Biassiatah.
No.
Frondor.
Yes.
Kranek.
Yes.
Kukral.
Yes.
Pietro.
Yes.
Trevis.
Yes.
Bicker.
Yes.
Ordinance number 24, 2017, has passed. Moving on to ordinance number 25, 2017.
Mr. President.
Councilman Kranek.
I move that we suspend the rules under the charter and read ordinance number 25, 2017, by Title only for its third and final reading.
Second motion, Mr. Chairman. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biassiatah.
Yes.
Frondor.
Yes.
Kranek.
Yes.
Kukral.
Yes.
Pietro.
Yes.
Trevis.
Yes.
Bicker.
Yes.
Ordinance number 25, 2017, introduced by Mayor Delacqua and Councilman Trevis, Frondor, Bicker, Kranek, Biassiatah, Kukral, and Pietro, in ordinance providing for the submission to the electors of the city of Seven Hills, Ohio, a certain charter amendment pursuant to Article 10 of the Charter of the city of Seven Hills, Ohio, for the purpose of amending Article 5, Administrative Departments, Boards, and Commissions by creating a new Section 10 Financial Advisory Board.
Ordinance number 25, 2017, has been read for its third and final reading. Is there a motion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Kranek.
I move that we pass ordinance number 25, 2017.
Second motion, Mr. Chairman. Is there any discussion? Just want to say that I'm pretty excited about this particular charter amendment. This will create a panel of three residents who will be charged with reviewing our city finances annually. Maybe they catch things that we haven't seen, maybe they have suggestions that we haven't thought of, and this just increases productivity and transparency, and I think this is a great thing. Is there any further discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Biassiatah.
I'd just like to echo your statement, that I think this is a good idea. The more eyes and greater transparency on our financials is best for the entire city and everyone involved. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Is that what your residents in Word One told you as well?
I only got feedback on this one by one person, and in that regard, they stated that they felt we should have put credentials. I had two dozen emails and phone calls on the other issue. So I didn't feel one was enough to impact the decision.
Thank you. Please call the roll.
Biassiatah.
Yes.
Frondor.
Yes.
Kranek.
Yes.
Kukral.
Yes.
Pietro.
Yes.
Trevis.
Yes.
Bicker.
Yes.
Ordinance number 25, 2017, has passed. Moving on to amended ordinance number 26, 2017.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Pietro.
I move that council suspends the rules under the charter and reads amended ordinance 26, 2017, for its final reading.
I second.
Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biassiatah.
Yes.
Frondor.
Yes.
Kranek.
Yes.
Kukral.
Yes.
Pietro.
Yes.
Trevis.
Yes.
Bicker.
Yes.
Amended ordinance number 26, 2017, introduced by Councilman Trevis, Frondor, Bicker, Kranek, Biassiatah, Kukral, and Pietro, in ordinance to man Section 729.03A computation of charges as contained in Chapter 729 Sewer Rates of Title III Public Utilities of Part VII Streets and Public Services Code of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Seven Hills, Ohio, for the purpose of amending the storm drainage and sanitary sewer system service or rental charges and declaring an emergency.
Amended ordinance number 26, 2017, has been read for its second and final reading. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Pietro.
I move that council passes amended ordinance 26, 2017.
I second.
Is there any discussion? I want to explain this real quick on the record, so people understand what this is about. Every summer, the city sends out a bill for sewers to our residents. We currently charge 90 cents for sanitary per square foot, 45 cents for storm. The year-end balance in our sanitary fund will be approximately $933,000. Year-end balance for storm, approximately $200,000. We are beginning to have discussions about doing some sewer projects this summer, but we need to level this off. We're flipping the amount we charge for each of the funds. Currently, at 90 cents for sanitary, 45 for storm is just reversing, and there is a much greater need to do stormwater work as opposed to sanitary. So this levels it off, gives us more money to do storm projects, and I want to thank Councilman Pietro for bringing this to our attention and doing a lot of work on this particular ordinance. It's going to help our city greatly, so thanks, Frank. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Biassiatah.
Yes.
Frondor.
Yes.
Kranek.
Yes.
Kukral.
Yes.
Pietro.
Yes.
Trevis.
Yes.
Bicker.
Yes.
Amended ordinance number 26, 2017, has passed. Moving on to amended ordinance number 27, 2017.
Amended ordinance number 27, 2017, introduced by Mayor Delacqua and Councilman Trevis, Frondor, Bicker, Kranek, Biassiatah, Kukral, and Pietro, in ordinance to man Section 979.07, Preliminary Development Plan Submental Requirements as contained in Chapter 979, Rockside Road South Planned Unit Development District of Title IX Zoning Use Districts of Part IX Planning and Zoning Code of the Codified Ordinances of the city of Seven Hills, Ohio, for the purpose of amending the prohibition against tree vegetation removal or grading on property in the Rockside Road South PUD district prior to the approval of a final development plan in accordance with this chapter, and to provide for procedure whereby an applicant with a preliminary development plan approved pursuant to this chapter may apply for and obtain approval for the tree vegetation and grading on all or part of the property identified as being the preliminary development plan area in such approved preliminary development plan prior to approval of a final development plan in accordance with this chapter.
Amended ordinance number 27, 2017, has been read for its second reading.
Mr. President.
Councilman Frondor.
I move that we accept and approve the Planning Commission's report and recommendations dated February 23, 2017, in reference to amended ordinance number 27-2017.
I'll second that. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biassiatah.
Yes.
Frondor.
Yes.
Kranek.
Yes.
Kukral.
Yes.
Pietro.
Yes.
Trevis.
Yes.
Bicker.
Yes.
Ordinance number 28, 2017, introduced by councilperson Trevis, Frondor, Bicker, Kranek, Biassiatah, Kukral, and Pietro, in ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor to enter into an agreement on behalf of the city of Seven Hills, Ohio, with Frederick's Floor Covering and Cabinetry of Parma, Ohio, for the purpose of rubber tile flooring, for the purchase of rubber tile flooring, vinyl-based material, and appurtenances, including installation, at the Community Recreation Complex Pool Meeting Room, appropriating the sum not to exceed $3,538.05 for said purchase, and declaring an emergency.
Ordinance number 28, 2017, has been read for its first and final reading. Is there a motion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Kranek.
I move that we pass ordinance number 28, 2017.
I second.
Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biassiatah.
Yes.
Frondor.
Yes.
Kranek.
Yes.
Kukral.
Yes.
Pietro.
Yes.
Trevis.
Yes.
Bicker.
Yes.
Ordinance number 28, 2017, has been passed. We'll now move on to ordinance number 29, 2017.
Mr. President.
Councilman Kukral.
I move that we suspend the rules under the charter and read ordinance number 29, 2017, by Title only for its final reading.
Second motion, Mr. Chairman. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biassiatah.
Yes.
Frondor.
Yes.
Kranek.
Yes.
Kukral.
Yes.
Pietro.
Yes.
Trevis.
Yes.
Bicker.
Yes.
Ordinance number 29, 2017, introduced by Mayor Delacqua and Councilman Trevis, Frondor, Bicker, Kranek, Biassiatah, Kukral, and Pietro, in ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor to enter into an agreement on behalf of the city of Seven Hills, Ohio, with Green the financial implications of outsourcing the city's Seven Hills Building Department, appropriating an amount not to exceed $3,000 for said service, repealing amended ordinance number 15, 2017, passed by council on February 13, and declaring an emergency.
Ordinance number 29, 2017, has been read for its first and final reading. Is there a motion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Kukral.
I move that we pass ordinance number 29, 2017.
Second motion, Mr. Chairman.
Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biaseata?
Yes.
Frondorf?
Yes.
Kranek?
Yes.
Kukral?
Yes.
Petro?
Yes.
Trefas?
Yes.
Bicker?
Yes.
Ordinance number 29, 2017, has passed. We will now move on to the first reading of ordinance number 30, 2017.
Ordinance number 30, 2017, introduced by Councilman Trefas, Frondorf, Bicker, Kranek, Biaseata, Kukral, and Petro, in ordinance to men Sections 707.01, Definitions, Point 02, Establishment and Jurisdiction of City Arborists, Point 03, Master Street Tree Plan Adopted, Point 04, Permit Required Conditions for Granting, Point 05, General Tree and Shrub Regulation, Point 06, Certain Trees Prohibited, Point 07, Preservation and Removal of Trees on Public Property, Point 08, Procedure Upon Order to Preserve or Remove, and Point 11, Duties of Private Owners as contained in Chapter 707, Street Trees of Title I Streets and Cyborgs of Part VII, Street and Public Services Code of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Seven Hills, for the purpose of clarifying the responsibility for the maintenance of trees on tree lines.
Ordinance number 30, 2017, has been read for its first reading. We will now have the first reading of ordinance number 31, 2017.
Ordinance number 31, 2017, introduced by Councilman Trefas, Frondorf, Bicker, Kranek, Biaseata, Kukral, and Petro, in ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor to enter into an agreement on behalf of the city of Seven Hills, Ohio, with the Board of Education of the Parma City School District of Parma, Ohio, to provide transportation for 2017 Summer Day Camp Field Trips. Said agreement shall terminate August 31, 2017, authorizing an amount not to exceed $4,500 for said service.
Ordinance number 31, 2017, has been read for its first reading. We will now move on to ordinance number 32, 2017.
Mr. President.
Councilman Bicker.
I move that we suspend the rules under the Charter and read ordinance 32-2017, by title only for its first and final reading and declaring an emergency. I second.
Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biaseata?
Yes.
Frondorf?
Yes.
Kranek?
Yes.
Kukral?
Yes.
Petro?
Yes.
Trefas?
Yes.
Bicker?
Yes.
Ordinance number 32, 2017, introduced by Councilman Trefas, Frondorf, Bicker, Kranek, Biaseata, Kukral, and Petro, in ordinance to appropriate an additional sum of $233.50 per month on a month-to-month basis for a change order to ordinance number 96, 2016, passed by council on August 23, 2016, which authorized a one-year comprehensive managed service agreement with FIT Technologies of Cleveland, Ohio, to provide services and support of the city of Seven Hills Computers and all departments, for the purpose of providing off-site backup for an additional three servers that were not in the original scope of services, authorizing and directing the mayor to sign the BaaS agreement addendum for said services, and declaring an emergency.
Ordinance number 32, 2017, has been read for its first and final reading. Is there a motion?
Mr. President.
Councilman Bicker.
I move that we pass ordinance 32-2017. I second.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President.
I'm not sure who said that.
Sorry.
Councilman Biaseata.
Sorry, Mr. President. I just want to publicly acknowledge Ben Horton's work on this. I wasn't sure what we were doing here, and I came in today, and I asked him a question, and he had all the answers, so, thank you, Ben. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Biaseata?
Yes.
Frondorf?
Yes.
Kranek?
Yes.
Kukral?
Yes.
Petro?
Yes.
Trefas?
Yes.
Bicker?
Yes.
Ordinance number 32, 2017, has passed. Moving on to amended resolution number 1, 2017.
Yes, Mr. President.
Councilman Frondorf.
I move that council suspend the rules under the Charter and read amended resolution number 1, 2017, by title only for its final reading.
I'll second that, Mr. President.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Please call the roll.
Biaseata?
Yes.
Frondorf?
Yes.
Kranek?
Yes.
Kukral?
Yes.
Petro?
Yes.
Trefas?
Yes.
Bicker?
Yes.
Amendment resolution number 1, 2017, introduced by Councilperson Trefas, Frondorf, Bicker,
Kranek, Biaseata, Kukral, and Petro, a resolution authorizing the city to accept the findings of the Ohio Ethics Commission Inquiry Number 15Q0925044 dated November 15, 2016, in the matter of former Councilwoman Carol Lechner, and furthermore, authorizing the city to accept the resolution of the Ohio Ethics Commission and payment of $2,112.50 in restitution to the city paid by former Councilwoman Carol Lechner for her participation in increasing the salary and/or salary range of Seven Hills Fire Prevention Officer Joe Lechner, husband of former Councilwoman Carol Lechner.
Amended resolution number 1, 2017, has been read for its third and final reading. Is there a motion?
Yes, Mr. President.
Councilman Frondorf.
I move that we adopt amended resolution number 1, 2017.
I'll second that, Mr. President.
Is there any discussion? If I may put the law director on the spot, and if you could explain why this council cannot try to obtain the extra $200 that is due, I would appreciate it.
My assistant law director, Pat DeChiro, has been in contact with the Ohio Ethics Commission, who advised him that this settlement agreement is a done deal, and that we have no authority to make any changes to that agreement in the amount or otherwise, and that it's essentially signed, sealed, and delivered, and this matter is resolved, and they're not interested in doing anything, and we don't have any authority to do anything.
Thank you very much. Is there any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Biaseata?
Yes.
Frondorf?
Yes.
Kranek?
Yes.
Kukral?
Yes.
Petro?
Yes.
Trefas?
Yes.
Bicker?
Yes.
Amended resolution number 1, 2017, has been adopted. Council will now be open to the audience. If you have any comments, please approach the podium and state your name and address. Anybody in the first row?
Ron Grayheck, 1172 John Grand Drive. Last week, I asked council for the emails that they claimed they had for everybody that was in favor of the mayor. To date, I haven't received any, so, I take it either council has so many emails that they couldn't get them down on paper, or you have none. As to Mr. Biaseata said, everybody that contacted him is not in favor of this. And all the people that I've talked to are not in favor of this. They told me, before they would even consider voting for this, they better have their streets fixed. And to all the surrounding communities that you alluded to, with all the mayors that are making $100,000, they have a huge income tax base. We have one more hurrah, and when that's done, we have no more income tax base, no way of getting any more money into this city. So, we have to look at everything. And roads will always be there, and no more money will always be there. So, I think your mayor's thing is going to go down the tubes. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody further in the first row?
Good evening. Len Schmall, 6249 Hastings Drive. I believe that in readings with the monthly or quarterly newsletter, there's an ordinance on the book about garbage cans and the placement of garbage cans. I know this is important. Jim brought up a comment about making the city beautiful and loving living it. Well, since they got the new garbage cans, people think that they're to be placed in the front yard like a tree or a lawn ornament. Now, you can go down, if you don't doubt me, go down East Ridge Wood, starting with the first house in Seven Hills, which I think the third one from the corner. In between there and Tango Wood, where I live across the street on Hastings, there's 10 houses that have their garbage cans either parked in the front yard, in front of the garage doors, or along the side of the house. Several of them have four, five, six garbage cans. And not only that, they have, there's houses on that street on the opposite side, they have sheds or cabinets and wheelbarrows and stuff parked against their house. Okay, is there an ordinance? I ask you.
My understanding is that, yes, there is.
Okay.
May I?
Go ahead.
I recall this coming up some time ago. We had asked the building commissioner to cite, or at least send a courtesy letter to those houses that were violating it. I don't know if that happened or not, but if there are houses that you can identify and turn in to the mayor or the service director, the building commissioner, I'm sure that those courtesy letters would be issued.
Okay. I mean, I don't want to have to go through an expensive mailing to all the...
It would cost a stamp.
Okay.
It's no big deal.
But it's just ridiculous that you see these things. There's the first guy, and I think he's a renter, he parks them in the middle of the driveway, and they sit there all week. I mean, come on, it's, you know...
I had one experience with a house on Laura Lee that was doing exactly this, and I sent it to the building department, and I do know that they followed up, and it's no longer a problem.
Okay.
So, if we could find out which houses exactly, I'm sure it'll get taken care of.
I will get you a list.
Please do.
Thank you very much. I appreciate you.
Thank you. Anybody further?
Tom Jares, 224 Crescent Ridge Drive. I'm not going to apologize for this, because you guys have been bashing me for 25 days, but before I get to this, I want to thank Councilman Biaseata for actually saying what your constituents want. And I thank everybody else for all the pontificating, statistics from other neighboring cities, and all this wonderful rationalization. I like the one about moving the city ahead. It's really cool. I hope people don't want this so bad that they move out to go to Broad Heights and every place with a full-time mayor. Good evening to everyone in the room, and those who might be watching live. I would like to address claims made about me and my planning commission participation that have been made by Councilman and City Prosecutor Pat DeChiro, and began on February 2, 2017. Posts about me on Facebook pages controlled by Councilman Frondorf, Kukral, and Trefas began on February 2. Those posts announced the council had been instructed to not speak to Planning Commissioner Tom Jares because of the possibility of litigation regarding actions I had taken. I'm lost to understand the need or purpose of those posts, other than to somehow demean me personally and cast a shadow of doubt on my character. But you guys got them up there. Way to go. I'd like to stress the fact that the various statements made about me and my planning commission participation are nothing more than the allegations and opinions of a developer and prosecutor DeChiro, and have not been proven to have any validity in fact or law. They're just being said. I have not retained an attorney for this matter, and do not, at this point, see any need for litigation. I have not been provided any information that indicates that any litigation pertaining to any rockside road development activity is pending or imminent. Nobody's told me somebody's going to sue, threat to sue, blah, blah. Without pending or imminent litigation, Prosecutor DeChiro's recent claim to attorney-client privilege when meeting with full council on February 3 seems to fail, and the meeting falls back to being a discussion of disciplining a city official. Sunshine Law requires that specific action be taken only in open meetings. So, the little tete-a-tete on February 3, Sunshine Law violation. Further, I have not been provided with any information that shows that my actions as a planning commissioner have caused or could cause any development on Rockside Road to I'll wait for you guys to finish. On February 8, I received a letter from Prosecutor DeChiro stating that he had been authorized by the mayor, mayor and council to begin proceedings to remove me from the planning commission. Again, that authorization would have had to occurred at an open meeting according to Sunshine Law. Disciplinary action, open meeting, not exac, not separate meeting, open meeting. Please, anybody, point me toward the open meeting minutes where that February 8 authorization occurred, or admit that another violation of the Open Meetings Act occurred. Either you had the open meeting, or you didn't. And you violated Sunshine Law. On February 9, an email was received by Prosecutor DeChiro that asked that he provide to me in writing his detailed allegations in support of my removal from the planning commission. I have not received that written information yet. Something about due process, somewhere in here, due process gets sort of gray. At the February 13 council meeting, Prosecutor DeChiro verbally presented six of his allegations in support of his opinion that I should be suspended from the planning commission, and he claimed these six could bring litigation. So, woulda, coulda, shoulda, maybe, might tomorrow. Six claims. Number one claim, I had exhibited bias against the Glens landing developer on social media. I was forced by the mayor and Christine Tobin to recuse myself from my very first meeting as a planning commissioner because a letter had been received from an attorney representing Land Song Limited. That letter claimed my bias and pointed towards online statements made by me when the 2015 Issue 87, John Glenn rezoning issue, was being promoted by developer Land Song Limited. So, I made nasty remarks in 2015 in reference to rezoning John Glenn, so that's a reason for me to be biased today. Mayor Delaculla later commented to me that the claim was political and not really an issue at law. But I recused myself from that meeting. Right, mayor? You were there. Second claim, I have engaged in recent litigation with Land Song Limited. I, Tom Jares, have engaged in recent litigation with Land Song Limited, and have been difficult about recusing myself from planning commission meetings. At a December 8 planning commission meeting, I said I wouldn't recuse myself further. That is Prosecutor DeChiro's allegation. Fact of the matter is, I have never engaged in litigation with Land Song Limited or its principles. Tom Jares has never been in any litigation with anybody at Land Song. At the second planning commission meeting I attended, I was once again forced to recuse myself. Forced to. Christine Tobin said, "This can't happen. I can't let it go ahead." Mr. Pignotello's told me Christine Tobin, or nobody in law, has the authority to stop that meeting. I was once again forced to recuse myself because of another letter from a Land Song attorney making the false allegation that I had personally brought litigation against Land Song or one of its principles. That attorney later recanted that statement regarding the false accusation. He did that in a letter sent to the Seven Hills Law Department and to the attention of Christine Tobin. He said, "No, that's a lie. Tom Jares never sued Land Song or its principles." But our law department saying, "No, no, you can't do this. He'll get mad and we'll get sued." At the December 8th planning commission meeting, I stated that the recanting, the attorney's recanting of the claim that I was a participant in that lawsuit meant that I would no longer be recusing myself at meetings. The planning commission chair asked if law had checked that out and instructed Terry Mattson to check with law to see if they had gotten that letter and what my status was supposed to be. So my statement at the December 8th meeting that I wouldn't recuse myself was because I didn't think there was any reason to recuse myself. Now law had the skinny. Didn't mean crap, apparently. Third contention of Mr. DeChiro's. I have maliciously interfered with the Glenn's Landing development by contacting the property owner and the Army Corps of Engineers. Guilty and guilty on the contact, folks. I contacted, actually, I didn't contact the owner of the Glenn's Landing property because that's Land Song Limited now, but at the time I made contact, Centurion Energy still owned that property. I contacted the former owner, Centurion, of the Glenn's Landing property. Building Commissioner Morrow, because Building Commissioner Morrow had stated during a caucus meeting on 4/18/2016 that trees are being cleared on the Centurion property. The video of Mr. Morrow making that statement is available on Seven Hills Council Watch on YouTube. So you can hear him say, "Trees are getting cut." You know, something along the lines that they were clearing them so they could do surveys and the other guys were doing it too. So clearing trees would have been a violation of federal law protecting Indiana bats. Councilman Trevis provided me with the name and number of a person at Centurion who I talked to. I asked that person if he was aware of tree clearing on his property. He told me that no tree clearing was occurring. Period. There was none. That was it. I asked the question, he answered it. The second item with the Army Corps. A wetland delineation report submitted in conjunction with Glenn's Landing pre-development application showed only the southern portion of the owned acreage. Now, I wasn't allowed to participate in a meeting where they saw this, but I got the background info. For those of you that don't know, wetland delineation, it shows where you have wetlands. It shows where you have streams. Army Corps of Engineer permits are predicated on not disturbing a certain acreage, in this case, .5 acres of wetland or 300 lineal feet of stream. Anybody, the monkey stops checking public records and wants a permit, he gets it. If he isn't disturbing more than a half acre and 300 lineal feet, it's automatic. You go beyond that, it's a problem. So the representation that I saw as a non-functional planning commission member only showed the rear approximate two-thirds of the property, Glenn's Landing. The whole property, there wasn't a wetland delineation for the whole parcel. Now, I don't know what my other fellow planning commissioners have in their background experience, but I've talked to the Army Corps quite a bit in reference to stuff that was going on at Stone Ridge and some stuff that's going on in Seven Hills. So the representation purported to be sufficient because it showed the first phase in the development. I had personal knowledge that the Corps required total project consideration and rejected permit approvals by phase. The Army Corps just doesn't care what you're doing today and give you a permit for that and then tomorrow you jump to the next adjacent part of your property and you do some more. Because after you exceed the general permit level, it throws you into a different class of permit. Remember, the monkey gets the general permit. When you move to the next class, it can take a year, 14, 15 months before you get the next class. I had personal knowledge that the Corps required total project consideration and rejected permit approvals by phase. I called a Corps representative known to me and asked if Corps policy had changed. Seven Hills approval of a plan contrary to federal law could have legal repercussions for the city of Seven Hills. So this is important. We tell the developer, "Yeah, okay, you're good. The feds find out you screwed up, you're in a kid bag." So is the developer, but so is the city because you let them do it. You're supposed to know better. Mr. DeChiro's next contention, "Planning commission duties don't include investigation." So the planning commission is this little bunch of mushrooms and a developer comes in and throws a bunch of crap on it and you can't look. You just, you can only see the crap that's laying on you. Three former members of the planning commission resigned because I confronted them with their accountability for not performing due diligence. For looking outside the paper that was in front of them and saying, "Boy, that's a pretty drawing and let's do that." Because that's nifty, sort of like the detention basin right on the line with the park at John Glenn. Neat stuff. Let's do that. Even Councilman Trevis didn't like that one, but the planning commission didn't care. And when I called them on it, they quit. That's how I got my job. Three of them bailed. If you're going to hold our feet to the fire, we're leaving, folks. From the Charter, Section 5-7, Planning Commission. Number four, in the performance of its functions, the planning commission may enter any land and make examination and surveys and place and maintain necessary monuments and marks thereon. So Mr. DeChiro's statement saying that the planning, a planning commissioner doesn't have a right to investigate? Full of crap. Not going to work. Number five, my conduct could subject the city to liability. Anyone up there can subject the city to liability, come hell or high water. Trevis made a boo-boo. It cost us $6,000 bucks to defend them or $5,000 or whatever it was. Stuff happens. This is Prosecutor DeChiro's opinion only. Before I'm convinced, I'm going to need some kind of proof in fact and law required that I somehow extraordinarily caused the city to have liability. Because nothing's been said. Nothing's been shown. I didn't get an attorney to address this because I didn't know what the allegations were. I didn't know if they were civil, criminal, what? Never got one. DeChiro thought I did. Shame on him. The February 13th meeting saw Prosecutor DeChiro's legal implementation of the disciplining that his February 8th letter to me indicated had already been done. The one where the mayor and consul said, "Yeah, okay, we need to get rid of this Jerrys bum." Well, they actually had the meeting on the 13th where we could see it, where I could see it, and that's the first place I saw the allegations. Because quite frankly, I just thought you guys were nuts. I didn't know what you were talking about. The numerous questionable... I'm almost done, folks. The numerous questionable meetings that apparently were used to arrive at my suspension could subject the city to liability. So we're guessing at what I might have done and we sort of got an indication of what you guys did. Better chance of sticking you than sticking me. Item six, Prosecutor DeChiro believes that I am depriving the developer, and he said this himself, "I am depriving the developer of his right to due process and fair hearing." Failing to give me information I'm asking for is depriving me of due process as far as I'm concerned. Not adhering to Sunshine Law while you discuss this thing and set up this little witch hunt, that's doing me a disservice. But I was one of five planning commissioners. One. DeChiro threw in the word misfeasance just for craps and giggles. Don't even see where misfeasance applies. This is Prosecutor DeChiro's opinion only. Show me some proof in fact and in law because I'm seeing none. And I don't know that I can be convicted, judged guilty of anything by opinion, can I, Mr. Pignatello? Opinion count? Probably need some facts. You can't, I know you can't talk to me. This drama started with a video that I published on March 29th that stated consul violated development ordinances by accepting a deficient pre-development application. City has ordinances, you're going to do a development, you're going to do this, you're going to do that, you're going to apply, you're going to supply a valid traffic study? You're going to supply a valid wetland delineation? I told you guys it wasn't sufficient, it was deficient. I told the planning commission it was deficient. You guys passed it. So I'm standing by my statement. You passed something that violated Seven Hills ordinances. No two ways about it. You did. Councilman Trevis's use of a floor motion to accept the application could raise further questions. Maybe you're sure you're supposed to use a floor motion to pass that particularly. Zoning is involved. The developer for the Rockside Crossings development was made to jump through a variety of hoops in getting his project to progress. The fact that Seven Hills had no experience or guidelines in place for the Charter mandated rock side PUD caused many delays. You guys went through a lot of stuff yourself just trying to get this together. Most cities, "I want to develop, here's your list, go through..." You didn't have any of that. So you worked it out. That's great. But LSB Seven Hills went through a lot of hell and expense while you guys learned. Thankfully, that developer has been patient and persistent. He's going to make it work. This isn't going to be another fiasco like you had with the last guy. These guys are in it for the long pull. In my opinion, here's that my opinion thing. Planning commission and/or consul circumventing or ignoring of development ordinances does a disservice to the city of Seven Hills overall. Allowing any developer to manipulate the development process invites disaster. Rules have been established for a reason. Invite developers to observe the rules in a mutually beneficial effort or invite them to take the development elsewhere. Going to start ignoring rules and bending rules? You ought to get out of it. Get out of the business. Tell him to get out of business, take it somewhere else. That'll be it. Thank you very much for listening.
On behalf of all elected officials, we have been advised by the law department not to communicate with Mr. Jerris due to his actions he has taken as a planning commission member, which has put the city at legal risk.
Ron Grant, 1172 John Glenn Drive. There's an old saying, "Keep your friends close and your enemies closer." You rub the lamp and you let the Polish genie on the bun and he ain't going back in. And I don't throw my friends under the bus like you. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody further? Last call. Right. Okay. Moving on to the next part of our agenda, the reports and communications from the mayor and safety director, Mayor Delacqua.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just again, very briefly, some good news tonight. For those who have access to Facebook, you may want to go online. The city's website has a photograph of the new SUV vehicle which was delivered, I think, yesterday or today. I know it's in there today. For those of us who are motor vehicle buffs, I know, Tim, you are. I certainly am. Mr. Jerris, I know you are as well. Pardon? No, no, go on the city's webpage, the city's Facebook page. Yeah. This thing is a work of art. I'm amazed at how automotive technology has evolved just in the very short time that I've been on this planet. If you appreciate motor vehicles, you will appreciate seeing this thing. It is literally a work of art. Very proud to have this thing. I want to thank council and everybody involved for bringing this to our community. I think when the residents see this vehicle after it's been decaled and fitted out with accessories and the light bars, you'll be very proud of what your elected officials have been able to provide for your safety and the welfare of our community. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mayor. My only question to you about that is, where on the car are you going to put the crane at car? There's going to be a decal for that.
Given prior experience, I'll defer to council on that one.
Oh, thanks. Okay. Thank you, Mayor. All right. Reports from the directors of departments and other officials begin with Director of Law, Richard Pignatello. Thank you. Director of Public Service and Property, Stuart Levese.
No report this evening.
Thank you. Council miscellaneous, I think I'm going to begin tonight. For those who aren't aware of this yet, we have some pretty exciting news. Our engineer is currently working on a bid package regarding street resurfacing. We certainly know and acknowledge that we have streets in the city that are in desperate need of repair, and I just want to list off the streets that we're looking to put out for bid in no particular order. Vesbur Drive, Orchardview Road, Oakwood Drive, Walnutwood Drive, Applewood Drive, from Walnutwood to Oakwood, Cindy Lane, Gale Drive, Firethorn, Parkgate Oval, Forest Overlook from Karen to the cul-de-sac, East Parklay Drive from Northview to East Dartmoor, John Glenn Drive, Glenn Drive, East Dartmoor from John Glenn to Glenn, Crest Hill, Beacon Hill Court and Joy Oval. We did apply for a grant with CDBG to get some funding for Beacon Hill Court. Unfortunately, we did not receive that grant, so we'll have to have discussions on whether or not that remains in this program or not. But my point is that our residents voted to increase their fire levy tax and made a change with our income tax, and we are delivering on what we said we would do if that happened. So getting streets done is absolutely a priority of this council and the administration. With that, I do want to take a few minutes tonight and talk about our parks that primarily serve our children in Seven Hills since it seems to be a topic of contention recently. As we all know, Seven Hills is an older community, but we are now seeing indications of a change coming. The unfortunate reality is that residents are beginning to move to senior living facilities or are no longer with us. Over the next few years, that trend is going to become even more prevalent. With that, we need to begin slowly shifting priorities in a different direction to attract younger income generating families. And rock side development is certainly a great step in that direction. My comments tonight are based off of my experiences. I'm by far the youngest member of city council, and I know what younger families look for when they're looking to settle down in a new home or new community. One of those things is amenities for their kids. The best thing we have today to offer is our recreation center. It is a great building and has a lot of things that young people want. But our parks and baseball diamonds are also a key component. Now, I have coached Seven Hills baseball kids for six or seven years now. Aside from playing at Valleywood, we also play on fields in Independence, Valley View, Brooklyn Heights, Brexhill and Broadway Heights. And as I'm in other cities, the coaches on the other teams always seem to find out my position in Seven Hills and they're always razzing me about the condition of our fields. Sadly, I agree with them. Each city other than Seven Hills has beautiful fields, dugouts and facilities in their parks. They're gorgeous. Ours are an embarrassment, frankly, comparatively speaking. Valleywood, I would describe as being a disaster and arguably unsafe to play on. The infield is not level and it's a mess. The outfield fences have holes so big that deer actually walk onto the field during the games and we need to chase them away. If it rains, more than likely the game will be canceled in Seven Hills, but not in other communities, and that's because we lack a good drainage system. This is not what Seven Hills is about. We're a great city and our kids deserve the opportunity to be able to play baseball in a safe and nice environment. Now that brings me back to what we are doing in Seven Hills to make our city more attractive for young home buyers. Now, each member of council has different attributes and things that they know well and are passionate about. For example, Councilman Pietro knows our infrastructure probably better than anyone in the city. Councilman Frondorf is passionate about our finances. Councilman Kukral is focused on our parks. Jim has young kids and associates with parents of young kids all the time. He is currently involved with children's sports activities, so he knows that having good parks and baseball fields is important for not just the city image, but also for attracting new residents. Now that our city is financially stable for many years to come, we appropriated a mere $50,000 to make park improvements. That's just a drop in the bucket. It's very little money. Now let's be realistic about something. Valleywood and Calvin receive an overwhelming amount of use compared to North Park and John Glenn. It's simply a fact. It's simply a fact. Councilman Kukel has taken the lead and started the ball rolling on improvements for these highly-used parks. He held a special committee meeting and gave a presentation to council and residents. He asked for input into what projects we should do. He publicized it on social media. As a committee chairman, he decided what he feels is the right thing to do this summer with the $50,000. That's his job. That's what he was elected to do, to make a decision. After that, Jim has obtained quotes, met with vendors, arranged for the Parma School Carpentry Program to assist with the project, saving the city thousands of dollars of labor costs, and giving kids an opportunity to learn and gain experience in that field. He has spent a significant amount of time to make these improvements a reality. In return, over the past couple of weeks, Councilman Kukel has received nothing but criticism on social media and frankly, in some of these meetings. Claims that are unsubstantiated with no facts to back them up, no offers to help, simply just comments to attempt to make his look like, make his work look like a bad idea and self-serving. I've been around City Hall my entire life. I know exactly, Jim, what you're going through. My advice to you, ignore it. You are doing the right thing and have stepped up to help our community. There will always be people that criticize you and try to bring you down. I've dealt with it. I'm dealing with it now, and now you have to deal with it too. Ignore it. Do what you believe in your heart is best for Seven Hills. I, for one, Jim, thank you. The progress we will see in our parks soon is because of you. I stand by you 100%.
Thanks.
Councilman Frondorf.
I have, yeah, I have a few items that I'd like to address. Number one, the police SUV. I had a, I've had a couple, a few conversations with, with the last couple of weeks, and even before, actually, about the police SUV that was going to be delivered, and we learned that it indeed was delivered. Something that the mayor may not know, but we, the decals are going to be slightly different. And I had a conversation with, at that time, Detective Salum, and he had told me that several of the police officers had suggested exactly that, that, you know, maybe we should freshen up our, our police decals. And, and we kind of laughed, and I said, well, just as long as it doesn't look like a NASCAR race car, but I also mentioned that, that's a, it's a great opportunity. When I was working for John Deere, not as a lawnmower salesman, used lawnmower salesman, but rather on the, our large mining-
Inside joke, everybody.
Yes. On our large construction mining equipment, every time there was an iteration of a particular model, and typically it was called a dash one, dash two, dash three, or they may have come out with a brand-new model, we, in order to differentiate it, we slightly changed, slightly, the decal-ing of it. And it was actually, it was actually a lot of fun to do that, because, you know, you look at 10, 12, 15 different designs and, and kind of arrive at it by consensus, what, you know, what would look best, how does it best present the product? So this is a great opportunity. It's our first SUV. I've heard nothing, as you had mentioned, that the technology on this machine is incredible. And, and if we can freshen up the decal and the look of it, you know, it goes a long way. The other thing I wanted to mention was the comment about the trashcans, and I absolutely, you know, agree with you. This is a difficulty that a councilman has. We're not the, I'm trying to, I'm trying to be careful how I say this. It's not, you know, it's not my job, it's not any of our jobs to, you know, drive the streets and look for violations. That's not what a councilman does. However, what a councilman will do, and I know everyone on this council does it, and I know I've done it, if a resident calls me and has a complaint, you know, like what you had mentioned today, I'll take that complaint, and you don't, and I even tell the resident, look, you know, because typically it has to do with a neighbor or, you know, someone that they know. And I said, you know, you don't have to give me your name, or, you know, I don't have to submit it, submit your name, but what I will do for you is, as a councilman, now this is what we are responsible for doing, if we have a complaint, and that complaint can be, you know, needs to be addressed by various departments, you know, within the administration, that information or that complaint is forwarded. Now we have a building commissioner, we have a service representative, you know, service director, well, that's their responsibility. So what I, I guess what I'm trying to say is, if, to any resident, don't be afraid to call your, your councilman, because, you know, oftentimes, I don't know that the condition exists or the problem exists unless you tell me. I can't be everywhere around, around the city, and I will tell you that I have always forwarded it, and sometimes I've taken a lot of heat and a lot of flak for doing that, but, you know, that goes with, that goes with the territory. So I would encourage any resident, if, you know, if you're, you know, very conscientious about offending a neighbor or someone, call your council, you know? I guess we'll be the offending party. Lastly, tonight, what you, what you've heard were some really exciting things, you know? You go through the ordinances, the reading of the ordinances and the voting, and it's a dry, it's a dry, it's a dry subject, and, but, but here's what happened tonight. We passed ordinances. We're going to, we're going to build a pavilion, 20 by 28 by eight-foot-high pavilion, concrete pad, and we're going to partner with the Parma Schools to do that. That, that's going to happen. That passed tonight. We're going to improve the field at Valleywood to the tune of about $15,000. We are placing on the ballot in May charter amendments, and as Councilman Trevis said, and Councilman Kukel said, and if someone else said it, I apologize, but, you know, this is, we're providing our residents the opportunity to consider things. You know, vote it down. You don't like it, vote no. You like it, vote yes. You heard about sewers. We're changing our, the balance of our sewer fee. And, and that's in order to make improvements to our sanitary sewers, I'm sorry, to our storm sewers, which we have issues with. Now, these are not projects that are going to happen in one year, but this is, this is long-term. This is five, 10 years out, that we'll be able to accumulate money and devote money to correcting issues. We have, we have a street program. How many streets are on there? Eighteen, eighteen streets. Last, large street program we had was in 2007, 2008. The last street program we had was three years ago, and that was a million-dollar project, and I think it was four, four streets. So you can see what's happening. Now I've been criticized for saying, they go, well, you use cliches too much, and, and for some reason, that offends people, but I'm going to tell you, there's one that I'm very fond of. It's called blocking and tackling. And where that came from is John Deere, and John Deere, 180-year-old company, second-oldest company under continuous management in the United States. Anybody know who the first one is? Who's number one, the oldest?
Sherwin-Williams?
DuPont. DuPont. And that goes back to the Revolutionary War. Their big mantra, you know, their, their big cliche was blocking and tackling. Do the basics well, and the other stuff takes care of itself. So I'm not ashamed, they're, you know, embarrassed by saying, you know, we do the blocking and tackling, and what did we talk about tonight? Parks. We talked about field improvements. We talked about sewers. We amended the PUD to allow the, the major player in the Rockside Road Development to start clearing the land. And, and they have to, he has to do that, and I think it's because of an Indiana owl-
Bat.
I'm sorry, bat, Indiana bat. That, it has to be done before a certain period of time in the year. So, you know, we're trying to move the city forward. And here's another cliche, we're moving the city forward, and I, and Jim Kukel couldn't have said it better. This is, this is why, this is why we were, we were elected. Now, there's another bad word. You know, for some reason, people have a, they have a problem with the word mandate. But I'm going to tell you, you know, with all the, with all the work that we've, we put into, number one, the election, you know, a year and a half ago, and fulfilling, fulfilling our, our promises, I don't think mandate is such a bad word. We're doing what we said we were going to do, and, and here's another cliche, make a plan, work the plan. And if you, if you put together a good plan and you, and you work, you work that plan, and when I say work it, it's not, it doesn't happen by magic, you have to work at it, good things will happen from it. So the, the blocking and tackling, guys, whoever was talking, have you finished talking? Can I go on?
You just told you that.
Oh, I see. It's tit-for-tat. Okay, thank you. So we, we're moving the city forward, make no mistake about it, and I'm really looking forward to late spring and summer, and quite frankly, for those of you watching on YouTube, I hope you get so tired of seeing orange barrels. That would make my heart feel good. When you are so tired of seeing orange barrels because of road construction, because of road resurfacing, because of sewers being repaired, because of sewer basins being rebuilt, that would make my heart feel good. And that's where we're going. We're going to make the city, you know, a place that you're proud to live in, and we are going to move it forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Frondorf. Councilman Petro.
I have no miscellaneous, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Councilman Kukel.
Yes, two quick things. First of all, my comments before about the full-time mayor thing, I want to make something perfectly clear. They were not directed at our current mayor. I'm talking about the next mayor. I'm talking about 2019. If my comments came off in any way that's giving the impression that our current mayor is not doing his job, is not putting his time in, I apologize. That was not my intention at all. I'm talking about in the future, what I'd like to see for the future. And lastly, I will say to Ron, I am one of the most loyal people you'll ever meet. I have a job here, though, and when legal counsel tells me I need to do something, if I go against that, I put the entire city at risk, and I don't think that would be a very smart thing for me to do and a very prudent thing to do for the residents of the city, so, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Kranek.
No comment.
Councilman Bicker.
Um, yes, Matt, I'd like to add to your long job description of the mayor. The mayor also has to take the gloves off when he's dealing with council. And lastly, for the last couple of weeks or so, I've been calling city officials from all over the surrounding communities. I talked to one in Kihauga Heights with a population of 627, makes over $100,000 plus benefits, and to sharply contrast what Mr. Biaseada, my colleague on council, said, not one city official that I talked to did not think that was ridiculous, that our mayor is making $14,000 as a part-time mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Biaseada.
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't think I had any comment regarding the $14,000. Councilman Bicker. Not part of the comments, not once mentioned by my word. Anyhow, let's end it on a positive note. First, a reminder, we have a public hearing on Rockside Road PUD that's in this chamber, Thursday, March 3rd, 6:30. I'll try my best to be here. I'm doing a presentation for the Parma Schools at 5:30 on some new finance protocol. Want to tighten up, tighten up their procedures to make sure that our tax dollars are accounted for wisely. I really liked Councilman Frondorf's miscellaneous comments today about blocking and tackling. It's been a rough year and a half for me, maybe rougher, maybe because than I anticipated, but I am very proud of the overall accomplishments that have been made. We have a road program, straightened out the finances. I could go on, but I won't. So let's end the night on a positive note. One other thing that I wanted to call out, a positive thing, our caucus meeting last week, we had both the fire chief and the police chief there, and I thought those conversations were fruitful. And this is just another sign that the city moving in a positive direction. It's getting late. I'll add to that next council meeting, Mr. President. Thank you.
Do you have some? I thought you were raising your hand. Make a motion to adjourn.
A second.
Please call the roll.
Biaseada.
Yes.
Frondorf.
Yes.
Kranek.
Yes.
Kukel.
Yes.
Petro.
Yes.
Trevis.
Yes.
Bicker.
Yes.
Meeting is adjourned.
Okay. I know, tell me.
You have my-
This is going to be a much bigger fight.
Get some rest.
I hope I put you to sleep.
I hope I put you to sleep.
I think so.
Everything needs to follow there.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah.
All right, good.
See, yeah.
All right, I see it, but-
Yeah.
I wouldn't blame him.
No, that's why I wanted to pass the next one.
I didn't see you get that down.
It's been mostly the pockets and the pop ones.
Do they have, do they have any move?
Yes.
Yes, yes. I want to take forward five.
I'm going to need one thing, mother.
I want that.
Basically, mother.
Yeah.
Also, that's at least like, or my team, or employees, or my options.
Yeah.
They're, they're stuck in the middle.
Yeah.
Family to raise, or, or, this is loud, matters loud.
They're, they're boxing now.
They're, they're staying together.
Thanks, folks.
I hear you, I hear you.
The indication is not signed.
Signed, signed.
Well, usually comes over, fine.
You know, when you-
What's up, Rich?
Just caught this delay.
I got you.
Talk to you about-
What do you get going on this week?
I did one.
I got a Asian.
Try and make it, because-
Magical period.
I didn't know how it-
Give a copy of it.
I never saw that.
I never saw that.
Well, still going to have to make the-